You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
All right, we're going to get started. Board of Finance meeting Town of Branford for January 29th, 2024. This is a special meeting. First on the agenda is Citizens Communications. And at this time, we ordinarily ask folks from the audience that would like to comment on the agenda items that they have an opportunity now to step forward and make comments if they so wish. Does anyone wish to come before the board and address, sir? Ma'am?
Hi.
If you could come up here, please. If you just state your name and be helpful.
Hi, Lindsay Greenberg. I'm coming before the board, hi, hi, Harry, to hopefully have you guys support the fields that's on the agenda. I know I can speak for a lot of the people behind me as well, so we came here in full support of your agenda item number seven. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, just so folks know, if you want to come up? Yes. Sure, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Erica Palmer. I am president of Branford Youth Lacrosse, and I am also here with a bunch of other board members in support of agenda item number seven in the fields.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hello, my name is Kristen Magori. I am a teacher at Walsh Intermedia, and I'm also the girls' field hockey coach there. They have had quite a run. They've been undefeated for many, many years, and we play our little hearts out, but when we get down to Fairfield County to compete statewide, we struggle because we don't have turf, and they do. So I hope you really consider this, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, how are you? I'm Mike Tracy. I'm a resident and teacher in town. I've also coached in town for about 25 years. In terms of why I'm up here to speak is for agenda item number seven with the updated fields. Down at Walsh, I think they're needed for the kids in the town, all the programs in town, and as well as for the school itself. It can also be utilized on days when it's wet out, we can't get kids out there. We have special needs kids, we need to get out into the fields, which is important, but we can't always do that. So in terms of agenda item number seven, I just think it's something that needs to be done, and I think to some degree we're behind our surrounding communities with these updated fields in terms of what we can offer and give all of our kids the best situation possible. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Falsigno. I'm president of Branford Girls Softball. I come to you today not only as president of Branford Girls Softball, but also as a parent of three girls who go to school at, or one has since graduated, two are at Walsh as we speak. The field is in desperate need of a do-over, a remake. So I implore you to support this item number seven for the fields, not just for the Walsh programs, but also for the youth programs that sit here behind me today, including ourselves. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My name is Perry Mareska. I am the Economic Business and Development Manager for the Town of Branford. I will say that Branford is an easy sell, and the reason why it's an easy sell is because of the way of life. And the way of life we have here, part of that is what we do for the kids, both as growing up here, my children growing up here, and now my grandchildren growing up here. It makes a huge difference. And when I am talking about the benefits of the town, and I talk about the sewers that we have, I talk about the water that we have, et cetera, I also talk about the great way of life we have for the students and for the kids, and even us adults that end up using some of the facilities on the field. So coming from an economic development standpoint, I can't stress enough how this money will be well spent. So thank you.
Thanks, Perry. Okay, anybody else? If not, we will move on to the agenda item number two, which is the hearing presentation for fiscal 2022 audit by Clifton Larson Allen, LLP. And we'll welcome Vanessa. You want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vanessa Rosito. I am a principal at Clifton Larson Allen, otherwise known as CLA. I was not around for the 63022 audit. That audit was signed by Ron Nazek, who has retired as of December 31st, '23, so I am presenting the audit for you. But I am working with the finance department going forward for the '23 audit. So what I did is I summarized all of the deliverables into a PowerPoint presentation, so I will just go through this. If you have questions, specific questions about anything in the financial statements, I can entertain those, too. So on slide three, as far as the agenda, I'm going to talk about the terms of the engagement, what we were hired to do. I'll go over an executive summary of the results of the audit, some high-level financial highlights. I'll talk about the federal and state single audit, summarize the governance communication, and then also talk about some upcoming GASB standards. As far as the terms of the engagement, CLA was hired to express opinions on whether the basic financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, express an "in relation to" opinion on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which is the federal single audit, and the schedule of expenditures of state financial assistance, which is the state single audit, express an opinion on compliance related to major federal and state award programs, provide a report on internal control over financial reporting, and lastly, provide a report on internal control over compliance related to the federal and state single audit. So the results of the audit, we have issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the Town of Branford's financial statements for June 30th, 2022. This is the highest form of an opinion that you can receive. It basically means that everything in your financial statements is correctly stated. We did have an internal control finding over financial reporting. We reported a significant deficiency due to the lateness of the filing of the audit. As far as the federal single audit, we issued a clean opinion on the major federal programs that were tested, and we did not have any compliance findings or significant deficiencies in internal control. For the state single audit, we also issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the major state programs that were selected for testing, and we did not have any compliance findings or significant deficiencies there either. On slide nine, like I said, just sort of a high-level view of some of the financial statements. So on slide nine, this is showing all of the funds of the town aggregated together and brought on the full accrual basis of accounting, which means all the capital assets are shown here, and all of the debt and all the long-term obligations of the town. So just quickly comparing 2021 to 2022, the only things really to note are a couple things. Capital assets increased slightly due to just normal capital asset additions, construction in progress, and then some changes in your long-term debt, which decreased from 2021. So you did have a bond refunding during 2022, which brought the debt down there, and also your pension liability decreased $6.3 million. So overall, the net position of the town on a full accrual basis increased from $192 million to about $206 million. On the next page, you'll see the major funds of the town, the general fund, the capital projects fund, and the ARPA fund, and then the rest of the governmental funds are aggregated together into the non-major governmental funds column. So this is showing the results from last year to this year. Just focusing on the bottom of the page, the general fund's fund balance increased $5.8 million from $41.6 to $47.5. Capital projects fund balance decreased about a little over $8 million from $28.6 to $20.4, and that is due to just capital projects occurring and the financing not coming in yet, which happens often in a capital projects fund. The ARPA fund is the ARPA grant that was received by the town from the federal government. There is no fund balance in this fund because revenues are recognized to the extent of expenditures. And then the non-major governmental funds of the town, fund balance increased about a little over $2 million. So overall, fund balances decreased slightly, about $177,000 overall the governmental funds from '21 to '22. And just a little bit about the general funds fund balance on slide 11. Total fund balance was $47.5 million at June 30th, 2022. Of that amount, $1.5 million is non-spendable because it's in prepaid expenses. $424,000 is committed to a public works lease. That's the majority of the amount. The assigned amount is $4.6 million, of which $3.8 million is assigned to balance the 2023 budget. There's $815,000 in encumbrances, which leaves the unassigned fund balance amount about $41 million in the general fund. Just some more information on the general fund budget for June 30th, 2022. Revenues came in $8.2 million greater than budget for 63022. Expenditures came in $2.4 million less than budget. Your net pension liability, as I said before, decreased $6.3 million to $33.5 million. The police plan is about 66% funded. The fire plan is about 83% funded. The town also has a net pension asset, which basically means that you have assets set aside to fund the liability in excess of the liability. So that plan is about 125% funded. On the next page is, on slide 13, you'll see the pension trust funds and the retiree benefits trust fund. So the results of both of those funds were decreases in net position, about $4 million for the pension trust fund and about $1.8 million for the retiree benefits trust fund, and that is due to the market conditions in 2022. Net investment income in both of those funds was negative because the stock market was not very healthy at 63022, which is very consistent with most municipalities at June 30th, '22. And then moving on to the federal and state single audits on slides 15 and 16. For the federal single audit, the Town of Branford spent $4.7 million in federal expenditures. The major federal programs that we tested were the Child Nutrition Cluster and the ESAR grant, both of those at the Board of Education. As I noted before, we issued a clean opinion on major program compliance and no compliance or internal control findings. For the state single audit, the town spent $7.5 million. We tested the child daycare program and municipal grants and aid. Again, issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on major program compliance and no compliance or internal control findings there. Onto the governance communications. So we are required to communicate to those charged with governance certain items. This board is those charged with governance, so I'm just going to summarize our communication in this slide. We did have a new standard that we adopted at June 30th, '22, which was GASB 87, which was the LEAST standard. So this standard required municipalities to capitalize any rental payments or lease payments and also record a receivable for any rental income that the town was receiving. So the town actually had both of those instances. So the town has recorded a lease receivable in the general fund and also has recorded a lease payable in addition to an asset. Inherent in the financial statements are estimates. So we are required to look at these estimates because management is looking at various things to come, to conclude on these estimates. So we want to make sure that there's no bias as to maybe overinflate or underinflate these estimates as to sort of manage the results of the year. So those estimates are as follows. The useful lives of capital assets, which is reused to calculate depreciation. The net pension liability in OPEB asset, which the town does utilize an actuary to calculate those, but management also has input as to the assumptions used to calculate those amounts. The allowance for doubtful accounts is based upon historical information, and then claims incurred but not reported, which the town does utilize a third party for that. So we did not find any management bias in any of those estimates. We did not have any disagreements with management. Management did not consult with other accountants as far as a second opinion. We did not encounter any difficulties in performing the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements, and we did not have any independence issues. We are independent of the town. And lastly, wrapping up with the GASB standards upcoming. So for June 30th, '23, Statement 91 for conduit debt and Statement 94 for public and public-private partnerships is not going to have any effect on the town. However, Statement 96, which is subscription-based information technology arrangements, which is exactly like the LEAST standard. So the town is going to have to capitalize any software subscription agreements that they have and record a liability for those. So any agreements that are over 12 months in length, the town is going to have to do that. And then in 2024, Statement 99 is just an omnibus, sort of a clarification standard. There could be some small items in that standard. Statement 100 has to do with any accounting changes or error corrections, so just more guidance on how to present those. In 63025, there's two standards, Statement 101 on compensated absences, and then Statement 102 on certain risk disclosures. So we will look at those as we get closer to see if there's any impact on the town's financial statements. So I will open it up to questions at this point.
Questions from the board?
Just a question in the summary report, which is different than what the...
Okay.
Do you have anything to add to the required supplemental information that you offered no opinion on?
So the standards do not require us to opine on required supplemental information.
That's it?
That's it. So we follow the standards and we don't opine.
Okay, other questions? Charlie, got any questions?
I'm all set.
So I'd like to mention, just for the benefit of the audience, Charlie Shelton, who was not able to attend tonight, is listening in as a board member. He has the agenda and may participate if he so desires. Thanks, Charlie. No other questions? So I think we're all set?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just note that this is for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022, and the 2023 audit is in stages of final completion at this time. Item number three is to review requests from the superintendent of schools pursuant to Section 42.2 of the Code for Advisory Review of a 10-year contract for school transportation with Zoom Services Incorporated beginning July 2024. Welcome, Peter and Don.
Chairman Mooney, members of the Board of Finance, good evening. My name is Peter Verdun, and I am the chairman of the Branford Board of Education, and with me is Mr. Neal, COO of the Board of Education. As indicated on your agenda item, we are here seeking advisory, an advisory opinion with respect to the transportation contract for the succeeding 10 years. The proposal is to enter to a contract with Zoom, which is a relatively new company, to provide transportation services for the years 2024, for the succeeding 10 years through 3034. The total contract amount is estimated to be approximately $62 million. There are some increases to our transportation costs that we will be experiencing in the first three years, ranging from approximately 11% to 13%. They'll then level off at around 3.5% after that. One of the driving forces in terms of the increases is that there is a state mandate that we do electrify our bus transportation services, which this contract does propose to be compliant with. But I will also note that in terms of competitive bids that have been received for maintaining diesel contracts and perhaps delaying this decision, the increases, the proposed increases for those proposals were higher. So with that, let's turn it over to Neil.
I don't have any additional comments, other than I think the pricing was very aggressive. I think they very much want to make us happy and would like to land their first Connecticut contract. We have as assurance of their performance, we will have a performance bond. So some people have raised some concerns because they're privately held, but that's our assurance that they will either do it or we will get someone else to do it at their dime. So, but I don't consider that highly likely. I checked their references. They've had some really, really good success in the West Coast and also here in the East Coast as well. But this would be their first contract in Connecticut.
Questions from the board?
Got a question, Neil?
Charlie has a question. Shoot, Charlie.
Well, I have a contract, but I didn't stay in Thursday. I have a skate clause anywhere. Like, what if Zoom contracts or can't fulfill all these things that they make? Is there an escape?
So I think Charlie's saying is, what if they're not able to perform? What Don has said, that there will be a 100% performance bond?
That's correct.
That Zoom produces. In the contract, just by brief reading of it, there are liquidated damages or liquidated penalties for performances that they don't meet over the period of, over the contract. There are not any other termination issues there. Does that...
Very good. I hear that. Good thing so.
Okay. So, but along those lines, it's a private company, and there's 100% performance bond, but some of your termination factors in the contract, point two, insolvency and other types of inabilities to perform, what type of advance notice would you receive from
I don't actually have the answer to that question at this point in time.
Okay. So how do you know that they're financially viable now without any financial information about the company?
Well, insurance companies are right performance bonds, only do it when they expect those bonds never to be exercised. So that's a proxy. In my opinion, that's a proxy for their financial stability.
Okay. So any other vendors that are private companies that perform for you, you don't ask financial information, or you don't request it?
We did not request that as part of the request for proposals, no.
I think, just to tag on to that comment, Chairman Mooney, obviously, if the bus company's not performing, we terminate the contract, we obtain another vendor, and we have the performance bond to pull.
Okay.
You have a question?
Go ahead, Jeff.
So is it possible that the 10-year contract can be shortened since we're new to Zoom and they're trying to get their foot into Connecticut? I think their only northeast state right now is Maryland. I don't know that they're anywhere up and down the East Coast yet.
So the, I'll let Mr. Neal kind of flush that out as well. The reason for going with the 10-year contract is in order to amortize the costs of electrification over that time period. Without that runway, you're going to condense your costs, and the cost infrastructure to establish this is quite significant. I'll be frank with you, Jeff. I wrestled with this issue particularly, and the only other model that I could really come up with in terms of the folks that I talked to is the town taking on that responsibility, which means we'd be taking on the full responsibility of not only constructing a facility and providing all that infrastructure, but also taking on the grant risk as well. The advantage for this contract is we're getting that facility built out for us, and we're taking on no grant risk. So we're not taking on the risk of whether or not the grants are going to be there to subsidize this particular contract or not. Zoom is taking on that risk.
Right.
You know, they're good at it. They have a track record and a history of obtaining those grants, and you have some experience, right, in terms of your line of work in terms of what these vehicles do?
I do know that electrification is coming down the road. It's not 100% there yet.
True.
They're going to assume the liabilities to retrofit the property, to electrify the buses and put the charging stations in?
There are, I will just note, along those lines, there are two contract provisions that are currently under negotiation, one of which will ensure that if grants exceed that are expected, that the town would share in some sort of way with respect to the additional grants that might be obtained. So we'll have some upside gain if grants tend to be higher than what is anticipated. The other component is that, you know, buses, like vehicles, can be used for reverse charging, also having the flexibility to commodear the buses, you know, for, you know, resiliency center if we need it. So by way of example, real practical. We have a power outage in town. We need to supply power to, say, the community center or to the fire station. Generators aren't working or something along those lines. Being able to use the buses is reverse charging to provide power in those circumstances situations.
I do know that exists. So any grant money that might be available is being utilized by Zoom in the contract, so we're not accessing any of that?
That is correct.
And if any power is distributed from the grid back, do we get any cash credits? Are they built into the contract, or how are we going to be awarded any money that when the buses are parked, like in the summertime, and there's extra... the buses are parked, like in the summertime, and there's extra power that's going to go back into the grid? How is the Board of Education and Towne of Branford going to get reimbursed for that?
So, currently, right now, that would belong to Zoom. So, in other words, if they were going to use, use the buses as a battery storage bank, that would be currently, at least currently contemplated, that it would be there, they would hold on to that.
It's their credits.
Yep, their credits.
Okay. Thank you.
Pam?
Yeah, so, in terms of the routing efficiencies, they said, when we were able to get the fleet reductions and savings, did they give any examples for Branford in terms of any of those efficiencies?
Not for Branford, but in checking with their, checking some of the other districts that they've taken over, they've been very, very successful with large percentage reductions. Probably, I'm guessing, some of those districts may have been very inefficient, but, but certainly that's a possibility for them to apply those techniques here.
Okay. And another question was around staffing. Any issues with potential, I assume that the current employees aren't moving over to Zoom for Connecticut and they don't have a presence here, so do we have any issues with staffing?
So, certainly, one of the things, at least Zoom has indicated in the context of their presentations, is that they would look to current staff to apply for positions. So, the assumption would be that there would be a large carryover from current staff, you know, brought over to Zoom. Obviously, they have to go through their hiring and vetting process along those lines, but that they would be given the opportunity to be employed by Zoom.
And they have indicated that any first student staff currently in good standing would be welcome to apply.
Joe. Victor, and then Charlie, and then Jeff.
Yeah, I noticed there's a stated savings over 10 years of $21 million. So, I mean, are we to assume that if we go another direction, it will cost us another $21 million? Is, is a high level of confidence of that?
The, and I'll let Mr. Neal comment on that as well. The, the other bid that was received from a competing bidder was $21 million higher for apples and apples. So, the, from my perspective, there's only really kind of two options. We have the state mandate. We have to go forward and eventually fulfill this state mandate. This contract does fulfill that obligation. The only other course that we could have taken would be to delay this type of a contract, remain with a traditional diesel contract. Eventually, we'd still have to go with a contract like this. The downside risk of doing that is, is that presently, we're in a positive grant environment, and so that the ability to obtain grants and to have those grants being reflected in our pricing appears to be a very positive environment. We don't necessarily know what that environment's going to be like, you know, four, four or five years down the road. We might be in a much more challenged position at that particular point in time. It'll be more costly to implement later on. Plus, when you compare the diesel pricing, kind of remain as is, to what we are getting, the diesel pricing was already higher. So, granted, you are in a longer term contract overall, but you're asked also with a lower cost current option.
Okay. Thank you.
Want to give a chat there?
No.
So, it's safe to assume first student's contract's ending this year, so if this was accepted?
If this was not, if this contract was not accepted, if we received, if we were not to go forward with this contract, we'd have to negotiate a traditional diesel contract going forward. Or go with the first student proposal for the electrification, which was, you know, $20 million more, which is like somewhere in the neighborhood of close to 30% more. Jim can probably do the math in there.
I also got a question regarding the buses. I mean, I do see at the top of the list, 65 passenger, you know, passenger buses. And I brought this up again, you know, last year, there's no kids on these larger buses. You know, parents are driving kids to school. There's less kids, you know. The smaller buses seem to be more adequate, and I don't know what the compilation is of large buses versus small buses. We probably only need a few large buses to take the teams to away games versus travel on a full bus like when I was a kid.
And your, your observation is very apt. And as a parent, being one of those parents who did drive their kids to school quite often, perhaps more often than I actually wanted to, you know, we see the same, we see the same thing. And the hope is, certainly with their analytics, that that will be able to be condensed. You will note also in their proposal, they also propose to use more of the van size of transportations, and their sizes are larger than our current sizes. So, they'll be able to carry more kids. It'll provide greater flexibility. So, where there is the ability to kind of reduce size and reduce cost, hopefully that can be achieved as well. So, hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, kind of really push down the overall pricing because it is somewhat flexible because it does, the contract is somewhat demand-based, so it's not a totally fixed price.
One more question. I'm assuming the parcel they're going to be putting this bus terminal on can handle electrification. They've taught this ever source and all that stuff's in good order?
The sites have been selected exactly for those options in order to have access to electric infrastructure, as well as being approximately located in a, in a good location to be able to get the buses deployed, brought back, recharged if needed, and then put back out in the field. And knowing this particular site and kind of knowing the infrastructure that's around it, without knowing the absolute details in terms of the electrical capacity in that area, I'm, but knowing what other industries are in that area, I'm pretty confident that there's enough electricity, enough juice in that area.
It's the location that's identified in the contract, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thanks, Joe.
So, what happens if there's a change in law? Right now, there's a mandate that you must be all electric by 30, 30, by 2035? Is that what it is, Peter?
Yep.
So, what if, what if they, if that law gets extended or changed? How does, how does the contract get impacted?
As far as I'm aware, wouldn't...
We're ahead of the game then. I, you know, I, I don't know that we can make decisions based on, on those types of hypotheticals right now. But I, I predict that the families and the students and frankly, the teachers who deal with the students who come off the bus ride are going to be very, very pleased with, with not only the, you know, the, the healthy nature of these, you know, these, these no emissions, zero emissions vehicles, but also the, the super quiet ride. It's, they're going to be gorgeous vehicles.
So, Peter, you mentioned there was a partially demand-based contract? I didn't, can you explain that? So, that the, I know it's based on usage, but is there a base, there's a base contract plus other requirements? Or what if, to Jeff's point, if we need less vehicles, fewer students, different vehicles? How does that enter into it?
So, my understanding?
We, we only pay for the vehicles we need, that we use. So, you know, we have a, a size of the current fleet right now that, that all the bidders, you know, constructed their, their proposals against. But if, you know, efficiencies are found through routing or, or, you know, change in, in student population or that sort of thing, you know, we gain that benefit because we're, we're not running as many buses. That, I think that was meant, what was meant by demand-based.
I didn't see that in the contract, but is that, is that somewhere in the contract that you could refer me to?
It's, it's implicit in the rate structure. We, you know, we pay per bus by how many hours the bus runs per day, times how many buses we need. So, we have, we've reduced the fleet by a couple of the large buses during my tenure here, and it certainly, you know, that can continue to happen. We're not locked into any certain number of buses.
Okay. And the fuel, you pay, you pay for diesel now?
That's correct.
So, you, so the board pays for the fuel? And what happens under the new contract?
Similar, we'll pay for the electricity.
Okay. I didn't see that in the contract, but maybe, maybe I missed it? Could you point me to where it's called out?
So, that, that was a, that was a, I think, a sample contract that was included in the RFP. We currently have, our attorneys are currently working on making some modifications. That was one of them, that, that will be in the final contract.
That we pay for, for electricity?
Correct.
Okay. So, how does this fit in with your budget estimates that you've discussed with Town Hall for next upcoming years?
So, you know, we're in the process of, of going through our current year budget process. The superintendent is aware of this particular budget item, obviously, and is also under, aware of the discussions that we've had with, with Town Hall in terms of where we're going to be in terms of landing at an overall percentage increase year over year. We're going to have to work to work this contract into that budget.
What's the current budget for, contract now? What's the cost of the current transportation contract in the budget now?
About 3.6.
3.6. So, this is 3.9 is what your estimate is, roughly?
Yeah, we're in a roughly 62 million overall budget.
Over, like, contract?
Right.
No, 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 sorry, not over life, the, the Board of Education budget per year, about 62 million.
Got you.
So, you're talking about a $300,000 increase in a $62 million budget. The point simply being that we'll be able to find the room to absorb that.
So, this is a lot to absorb in a short period of time.
It is.
And so, some of, you know, myself have looked at it. I know some of the board, many of the board members have. Again, I've read the contract once. I went through the RFP as I asked for it. You know, a lot of detail here. We ordinarily are not early adopters, and so, you know, there's a, more of a prudent approach that we've taken over the years, even though when we've taken certain risks, they've been with our monies. So, I'm a little uncomfortable with it, but I, that's really part of tonight is to make us have a comfort level, knowing that we have a limited review process here under the statute. So, any other comments from board members?
Do they have a deadline to move forward and sign a contract?
There are some, there are some grant deadlines that are, that are putting some pressure in terms of moving, moving forward. I, I do want to just address Chairman Mooney's concerns. I had similar concerns as you did as well.
Hang on, Charlie.
I had, I had similar concerns as well. And having done kind of my investigation in terms of, you know, what, what are the other options? What are the other paths or alternatives that we have to move forward? I feel that this is the, the best option in terms of moving forward. But I, I do, you know, I understand what your concerns are, and it is a lot to talk because it's a very different dynamic. It's a huge shift from where we've been in the past.
Charlie, your question is?
Yeah, this may have been asked and answered, but I didn't hear. Who pays for the charging stations and the electricity charged in buses?
So, the, the question was, who pays for the charging stations and who pays for the electricity?
Correct.
And thank you for that question, Mr. Shelton. The charging stations and that infrastructure would be paid for by Zoom. That's part of their obligation to construct their new facility. The electricity would be paid for by the Board of Education.
Did you, did you hear that, Charlie?
No, I can't hear that.
Okay, so, so what Peter, Peter Burdon mentioned or stated is that the infrastructure piece of it is actually in their contract, so they're, so that would be on Zoom services dime, which is approximately $50,000 in 2024, 2425, $200,000 in 2526, $900,000 in 2627, and $1,200,000 in 2728. That's embedded in their contract. So, so essentially, we're paying for that. And, and we do, and we do pay for the electricity. Currently, we pay for the diesel fuel and I guess the gas if, if appropriate.
Correct.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Okay, Victor.
So, when do you think the final contract will be finished?
I would hope within, within a week, I would hope. They, Mr. Relat's question specifically, their bid bond expires on February 9th, so theoretically, they could walk away at that point. I don't think they want to do that, but that's an option for them.
So, my understanding of the statute is that you come to us for review. Has the board already taken action on this?
The board has.
And they, they, what, what action was that?
The board has approved the contract in concept, subject to further negotiations between the superintendent and Zoom.
So, was that unanimous?
I believe it was. I believe it was.
Okay. So, I know you're looking for something from us. I'm not sure what I feel comfortable with or the board members. So, I don't think we would give you a negative resolution. So, maybe a suggestion, again, you're going to, the board have, you have your, the right to do what you believe is correct under your statute. So, and we understand that. So, this is somewhat of a courtesy review, but also more of a clarity and to provide some transparency and at times maybe provide some advice, so.
And the advice is always appreciated.
Yeah. And, you know, and I understand, you know, the situation that you're in in order to get things done. You wanted to say something?
Mr. Mooney, you mentioned transparency, and I'd just like to remind people that on the, on the Public Schools website, under the banner, under more, under Board of Education, under transportation, there's a treasure trove of documents related to this issue.
Okay, thank you. So, I think we, the board has a choice here, a few choices. One, we could vote in, in favor of this contract. Two, we could take no action. Three, we could table it. Four, we could take a negative resolution.
I'd like to see drafts from the attorneys on the final contract before I would vote on this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Other comments?
So, if we take no action, they're going to act on behalf of themselves because they have a deadline of February 9th.
Right. So, Charlie, Harry was suggesting that we would like to look at the final contract, but we may not have the time to do that, based on the timing, on the, the timeframe that the Board of Ed needs to act under. So, maybe a, a resolution to, to acknowledge, receipt and to take no action, which is passive?
I would recommend taking no action, Joe.
That makes sense, I think, too.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Jeff has made that motion, and somebody want to second that? Seconded by Harry. Okay, there's a motion to take no action, to, there's a motion to acknowledge, receipt and discussion of the contract and to, to take no action. And the motion's been made and seconded. Charlie, how do you vote?
In favor.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, folks, good luck. Keep us posted.
Thank you, thank you all. Chairman Mooney, obviously, you know, we'll keep you informed as things move forward. And if folks want additional information, in the meantime, please, you know, let us know. We're happy to provide that.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, item number four is to consider, if appropriate, approve requests of the fire chief for the following transfer from contingency $70,000 to purchase services, repair and maintenance $70,000. Welcome. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I know you don't relish seeing us so soon, and with all due respect, I wish I wasn't here either, but...
Why? You know, you're always welcome.
We are welcome, we are welcome. But unfortunately, this year, repairs and maintenance have really exceeded our budget. I think a, a good portion of it is due to the inflationary environment, but we've had several very substantial repairs on a lot of different pieces of apparatus. As you know, that apparatus runs constantly. Since we've been sitting here, we've had a couple of calls already. So, it's always on the road. It's, it's on average 18 years old, and it's starting to show its age. So, we've had a lot of expenses to pass our pump tests, our DOT inspections, et cetera. So, we, we're, we're short currently about $42,000. I'm asking for 70 because I think that'll get us to the end of the year. I do think that we'll be able to cover some of the expenses within our, our budget, but it, it's just too early to start taking from various line items this early in the year. We have basically half the year to go, so. half the year to go, so.
Fire Chief, Fred Jim, or Catherine, what's the contingency balance for current year?
1,694,806.
Say that again?
1,694,806.
Okay. Charlie, you have questions from the fire chief or deputy?
I didn't hear any presentation, but what did one or more of the apparatus repairs took so much money?
The chief is explaining that, and I don't know if you saw the letter, but they've encountered a lot of repairs this year, and they need the 70,000 to get through the rest of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I saw that, but I mean, ordinarily, he has an excess in that account.
That is true, Charlie. We typically, we, we've had an excess.
Yeah, hang on, Charlie.
We, we've had an excess pretty much every year, at least in my tenure, nine years. And the average increase in that line item over those nine years has only been 2.2%. So we, we've been conservative in, in it, you know, we've had the surplus. So this year is very unusual for us. But I've asked my assistant, Brian Kozak, to offer some examples for Charlie, should, should he have requested them like he has.
Sure. Yeah, some of the examples are, are SUVs, two of them required some major work. Car one's vehicle required a transmission replacement, which was about $7,000. Car six, our shift commander's vehicle, required a valve job, valve lifters, and that was approximately $7,000. Truck one had a whole host of various issues that totaled, totaled upwards of $30,000. Engine seven with brakes. Engine two had a fan clutch brake, and that vehicle is, is very up there in the age, and they couldn't find the appropriate fan clutch, so they had to modify one, which took some labor hours, and also to get to the fan clutch. That, that repair was several thousand dollars. We have our sander from the parking lot that required replacement. That had been nursed for years and years and years, and this year was finally, we were finally unable to repair that. So, those are some of the items that have, you know, added up. And in most cases, these were to pass our required annual federal DOT test and NFPA pump test. One more, one more thing to add is that with the retirement of firefighter Geroli, who do, did most of our mechanical work, we did have to outsource more than we usually have. However, despite that, we still have somebody who stepped up within the department, is working within their scope, who's, who saved us a lot of money. It would have been a worse case if he hadn't been there to help.
Charlie, I'm not sure if you heard some of that, but they basically had a lot of extraordinary situations this year, including, is that the chief's car, car, car one? Car, car one needed a transmission. And then, that was the chief's car, so I just figured I'd throw that in there. Sorry, chief. Just, I'm just trying to get Charlie to vote for this one. So, and that, not a sander, ordinarily, that wouldn't be capital, but that's, okay, so, I got it. So anyhow, Charlie, they need the, the 70 grand to get through the fiscal year. Other questions from the board?
I'll move the transfer.
I got a question out.
Who?
The gentleman or the firefighter that stepped up to cover some in-house?
Rick Hart, Rick Hart, yep.
He's certified in various aspects of mechanical repairs?
Yes, he, he's working within his scope, so he's challenging the, you know, this, what is it?
ANC?
Yeah, the ANC, he just challenged the brake test, and he hasn't been doing much brake work until.
Right, you got to be certified for air brakes, so.
Yep.
Okay, just make sure that stuff's on the up and up.
Yeah, he's working within his scope, and, and that's the other reason, even when Dante was here, which he had more extensive certifications.
Correct.
You know, we back it up by our outsourced large vehicle vendor who does our DOTs, you know, just for that reason, it's kind of check and balances.
Thank you.
Okay, so anyone want to move this?
I'll move it.
Moved by Victor, seconded by Harry. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you. Thanks, folks.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Next is to hear the finance directors regarding financial challenges and opportunities. Jim?
Okay, thank you, Joe. I'm not going to go into too much detail, because you have about nine pages in front of you. So, I think a lot of those charts and tables are somewhat self-explanatory, but as Joe would always tell me, hit the highlights, and I know you have other things on the agenda, so I'll do that. But if you have questions about aspects of it, I'll certainly be happy to answer that. As, as folks in the audience and folks who cover these meetings on TV have seen, there's been a number of presentations to the Board of Finance over the last month or two about the various needs that the town is, is looking at. They range from roofs at the school, they range from, which was in the prior year's, which is the current year's capital plan, number seven on the agenda, which a lot of folks are here for tonight, which is the athletic fields, the police headquarters renovation, and a series of other projects that have been listed on those following pages. I think if I was home watching this on TV, I would probably want to know the answer to a couple of basic questions. One is, what are the needs of the town? How much does it cost? What's the impact? And what can we do to offset those costs? And so, again, we're looking at, at various infrastructure needs, we're looking at public safety needs in terms of staffing, both from the police and, and in terms of the fire, and a variety of, of capital needs. And I think what I'd like to do is to kind of keep it somewhat simple, is just to kind of work with two pages in, in the report. The first one is the, it's called projection 25 through 29. Sort of the format I'm going to use tonight is to kind of look at a base case scenario, and then add in some of these other items as the variables, and then look at some of the things we might do to, to offset that. So if you look at, if you look at the baseline forecast, that's essentially looking at, you know, where we stand today. I might add that, you know, I try to take a conservative approach to this. I realize that no plan is perfect, and we're in the business of managing expectations. So, you can look at the revenues and expenditures for the base case, and then what I've done is, I've added in what I would call new initiatives. And so when you look at the next page behind that, you'll see that you start looking at the new initiatives. You look at the fire staffing plan. There's, there's an amount in there for, you want me to talk into that? Hi, Charlie, how are you? Can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
All right. So Charlie, I'm looking at the page of, of the handout that talks about the new initiatives, and you can, and, and there's, and there's some detail behind some of these as well. So, for example, the fire staffing plan, which in 2025 starts at 1,930, okay? That, that basically is a cost estimate that we worked on with the fire department, which ties into the staffing plan, which they presented to you in the fall. We've talked about, a little bit about police staffing, and police schedules. I had mentioned at the beginning that a lot of the needs that we talked about are related to capital and infrastructure projects. In the town of Branford, we typically fund most of those through borrowing, through bonding issues. So, so what I did was incorporate, well, what would be the future debt service for those projects, and then compare that to the existing debt service, which would be on the first page. And then when you, when you look at that, you could see the, you know, the increase in, in costs. And then, I say, well, what are some of the assets that we have? You know, one of that, one of those is how we structure the debt, and two is, is do we want to use any fund balance in some of the out years to off, offset some of the requirements of those additional costs? And then I've actually factored that in, and then recalculated the mill rates based on the new initiatives, and based on the additional fund balance, and then made some assumptions about the grant list growth. I assumed a slight increase in the grant list. I assume that the Board of Ed, we've talked about the, the schools, or at least, Joe, you mentioned the schools budget. For, for modeling purposes, the school budget is slighted at a 4% increase. That is more than some of the increases in past years. We know that we're in an inflationary environment. We know that the teacher's contract is in excess of 4%. And we know that when we talked with the Board of Ed prior to the teacher's contract, some of the challenges that the board is facing, and, and one of the many challenges they have is that the ESAR dollars, which is the school equivalent of our ARPA dollars, those monies are basically phasing out. So those are some other things that the Board of Ed, in addition to the other challenges that they talked about, will have to, will have to address. And then in terms of, of bonding, we're assuming that the future new debt is going to be issued at 4.1%, and that we're going to finance that over 20 years. So that gives you sort of an overview of, of some of the things that the town's looking at in terms of initiatives. The actual specific projects are on some of the other pages in the report. And so I'm not going to go into every single one of those, but included in that are two of the items that you have on your agenda tonight to discuss. You have the police headquarters renovation, and you have the athletic fields. Those are some of the things that are included in that. So, the town would basically be borrowing $76 million during this time period, and there's a list of projects, like I said, in, in the handout, and there is also some numbers for contingency of stuff that has yet to be identified, and it could also represent projects that will cost more potentially when items go out to bid. The Board of Ed is in, is, is also doing a, a facility study in the next year or so, and they're doing an enrollment study. And so with the exception of the athletic fields at Walsh and the school roof, it doesn't include any other Board of Ed projects. Those will have to be looked at once that facility study is completed. Now, there are some other things that the town can do to offset that. We haven't put numbers on those, but I think they're, they're worth mentioning. One is that in, in the fire plan, there is a, a point where of the 24 positions, they'd be adding eight firefighters, and I believe the town, through the Fire Commission, would be applying for a, a SAPER grant, which would help offset, or at least phase in, the cost of those firefighters. So that would be something to consider. The other thing that the plan looks at is, assumes everything happens on July 1. So it's looking at them in fiscal year bunches. In reality, that's probably not the way it's going to flow. Not everybody's going to get hired on July 1. There'll be some time for, for those positions to get hired, and that's something that this board will have to contemplate, and further the RTM when they, when they develop their budget, in terms of how, how some of these plans get phased in. We may be able to reallocate bond proceeds from existing projects once we close them out. You know, one, one in particular that's worth mentioning would be the Walsh intermediate school, the construction project. So, once the final change orders are done at the state, and that those projects get closed, that project gets closed out, we would be looking to reallocate some of the bond proceeds on that for, to offset the borrowing in this capital plan. In addition, there could be asset sales, so that could be applied to some of these costs and projects. We have the 1111 Main Street, which is the former central office, otherwise known as the post office, which is currently vacant. And we also have the Canoe Brook, the former senior center, which is also vacant. So those are some assets that potentially could get sold. We did work with the Foot Trust, and I believe it was December, we had a, a resolution at probate court, in which we could use some Foot Trust dollars to fund debt service for a project that would otherwise be eligible under the Foot Trust grant agreement. The thinking was, rather than let money build up to do a project, that kind of works against us in two ways. The project gets more expensive, and, and then the trust is unhappy with us because we're not using the money. So, what we did is we talked to them about allowing debt service to be an allowable expense under the trust, and the folks at the trust, the folks at the bank, agreed with that, pursuant to a favorable ruling by the probate judge, and Judge Tierney agreed with our concept, thought it was a good idea, and, and approved it. And the other things to think about when you look over the course of this plan is that in fiscal year 26, we'll have a revaluation, and for those of us who've been around and on boards during revaluations, that typically results in a shift from, from, from commercial and personal property, motor vehicles typically, onto residential property, and, and those type of shifts usually cause a lot of friction among the, in the public on that. You have other items on your agenda that relate to this, and, and for future action, and there's a, you have a draft debt policy, and you have a draft fund balance policy, which would need to also be incorporated into the plan that you have here. Probably should highlight the, the tax increases. You know, when all of this is, is played out, you're looking at anywhere from, you know, high threes to mid fours over the course of, of the years, which, you know, one could argue that that's too high. But again, you're not going to be able to issue $76 million worth of debt over the number of years for these projects. You're not going to be able to add 24 fire positions, and add additional police positions, and change the schedule without some sort of budgetary impact. I think that this board and, and the RTM will have to kind of decide what the trade-offs are, and, and then revisit some of the things I just mentioned about different ways to mitigate it, based on timing, based on grants. I think it's worth mentioning that we did talk to our state reps. We told them that in the next few years in Branford, we are going to have a public safety focus. And one of the things that they, the feedback I recall from the meeting was that it's typically easier to get money for infrastructure, generally. And so, and so, part of this plan also includes the fire station being built, being built out east. You may recall that from the presentation. The nice thing about that is that, that could be something, if it's shovel-ready, at, at some point during the course of these years, that we would, and they would push for state funding for. And also, because it's out east, it also is, is good for Guilford as well. So that, that's another selling point of, of the plan. So, tried to give you a high-level overview. I know you have the nine pages to read. I, I've listed the needs in more detail. I've given you more detail in terms of the bonding costs. And again, one of the things I probably should mention that I didn't is, you know, we know through the, through groups that we're looking to make the treatment plant more resilient in the future. It's, it's located by the water, as are most treatment plants, water flows to the sea, their gravity systems with pump stations, and we also will be looking, when the time comes, to get grants for that as well. So, we're going to do what we can to try to offset some of the costs of this. But what I tried to do is, is take something about this far apart, and at least try to distill it down to a part that's reasonable in terms of how to approach it. And again, obviously, we still have to live through these years, we still have to live through each budget, and I could tell you that the final budgets will probably not look like what we have, but we have to start somewhere, which is why I use the Eisenhower quote, "Plans are worthless, but planning is everything." So, I think that sort of sums it up.
All right, Jim. Thank you, as in typical Jim Finch fashion, very excellent overview and analysis here for the benefit of the board and the RTM and the public, so much appreciated, and. So much appreciated, and very helpful. Questions from the board on this?
I'll say, Joe.
Okay. Thank you. No action is required on this, but it's very informative based on some of the other agenda items that we have, and obviously walking into the budget sessions very soon. Charlie, we're going to move on to the next agenda item.
Okay.
Are there questions you'd like to ask, Jim? You're good.
My vote is very comprehensive.
Absolutely. Item number six is to consider the following, consider an act on the following resolution, which is to, resolution amending the resolution authorizing an appropriation of $325,000 for police quarters, police headquarters renovation project, and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the, of the town, and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $325,000. Therefore, to increase the scope of the project, and to increase the appropriation and bond authorization therein by an additional $20 million, and to recommend the resolution for adoption by the representative of town meeting. Welcome, folks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Moody and board. Deputy Chief John Als from the Police Department with me tonight, Chief Mohern, Brian Humes, he's our architect from Jakunski Humes Architects, and Jeff Anderson, Vice President of Downs Construction. Chairman Seusselis is with us also tonight for the Police Commission in support of the project. So as you're aware, this project began for us back in 2019, when we first hired Hoffman Architects to do a slab moisture investigation into our lower level at the Police Department based on high vapor moisture that was coming through the floor, something that we had been dealing with for many years within the Police Department. Back in 2020, they gave us a report that says the moisture was excessively high and coming through the slab, and it had to be fixed. So at that time, that fix is, we noticed and recognized it was pretty large scale. And we also had a lot of other large-scale needs within the Police Department. And as I had told you, back in November, some of those needs included outdated and dangerous cell blocks, need for a women's locker room expansion, we have a leaking roof, we need windows and balanced HVAC system, space allocation, we need to reallocate space on our main level, expand our dispatch capacity, our generator needs replacement, our elevator's outdated, and we have site issues, including public parking and security issues on the site. So as you're aware, the board had put some funding aside as capital projects over the years to address the roof, HVAC, some exterior repairs. But as this project moved, moved forward, our vision was to just handle all these issues as one major bonded project, one major renovation, which will reduce costs for the town, and ultimately reduce disruption to the Police Department operations by having us get in, get out of the building, have the repairs made, and then come back into the building in one, in one shot under one project. So for the timeline, in October of 2021, we had contracted with Brian Humes for facility assessment, schematic design, and cost estimating services to perform a feasibility study at that time. That's when our feasibility study began. And then in the fall of 2022, Jakunski Humes was contracted for design development, which we came in front of the board. Following that, the Public Building Commission chose Downs Construction as the CM for the project. So on November 13th of 2023, the cost estimate summary was produced by Downs Construction. Also in November 2023, the Board of Police Commissioners voted in support of the project and asked to move forward with the needed renovations to the building. And in November 20th of 2023, the Public Building Commission voted in favor of the estimate summit, estimate summary and timeline provided by Downs Construction. So it's important to mention that they had oversight of the project and worked many, many hours on this project, along with Brian Humes and Downs Construction. And I just would like to recognize their extensive experience. They've been, you know, they have ultimate oversight of this project, the Public Building Commission, along with John Hoferly, who's a tremendous asset to the town and has incredible knowledge. So that's all I have for you.
Sure, sure. Questions from the board? So Charlie, do you have questions with regards to the police headquarters appropriation?
No, I read through it. I think it's, okay.
So remind me of the, the timing of this?
So the timeline, depending on funding, we hope to start construction summertime of '24, and it'd be a 13, 14-month project, but I could let Jeff answer that better.
I, I think Jeff Anderson with Downs Construction, thank you. I think the deputy chief hit the nail on the head. It's approximately 1st of August construction start, assuming approval of the funding and authorization for Brian Humes at Jakunski Humes to move forward with construction documents, allowing us to competitively bid it. That brings us to approximately August of 2024.
Okay. And then 13 to 14 months after that?
13 or 14 months total construction, yes.
Total construction. And in the meantime, are you working in occupied space, or you, you have an alternative site?
So we have an alternative site to vacate the space, which will help to move the project along, and that would be Company One here at, at the Fire Department. We've talked to Chief Mahoney. Patrol Division will run out of that, out of Company One. The site, we will have open for the public, we'll have a trailer placed there, so the public would still have, you know, be able to make complaints at the PD and receive records if needed at the Police Department.
Okay. So first, I would ask if someone would make a motion to waive reading of the full resolution?
I'll move. I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, Charlie, to waive the reading of the full resolution. Are you in favor?
Aye, I'm in favor.
Okay. Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And so I'll read the resolution one more time, which is, "Resolution amending resolution authorizing appropriation of $325,000 for the police headquarters renovation project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town, and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $325,000. Therefore, to increase the scope of the project and to increase the appropriation and bond authorization therein by an additional $20 million for a total of $20,325,000, and to recommend the resolution for adoption by the representative of town meeting."
I'll move it, Joe.
Motion's been moved by Jeff, seconded by Pam. Additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good luck. Okay, number seven on the agenda is to consider an act on the following proposed resolution, resolution authorizing the appropriation of $7,650,000 for the Walsh Intermediate School field improvement project and financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bond to the town, and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $7,650,000. Therefore, and to recommend the resolution for adoption by the representative of town Jamie, you want to handle this one?
Sure, Joe, thank you. I'm sure the board may recall at the November meeting, they heard a presentation from BL Companies, landscape architect Dominic Truda, who led the, the effort in terms of engaging the community, the schools, and the recreation department to develop a plan to address the community's needs. This is a school improvement project focused on the Walsh fields and the amenities around the fields. I believe there was a very thorough presentation at that time, included a cost estimate. My recollection is, I think, all the, you know, the board had, had some questions. I believe those were all addressed at that time. We did not seek action, giving time for, as, as we just heard, there are a number of priorities and projects, and give the finance director time to do the analysis which he just presented. However, I think it's also important, I believe the board, since that presentation, has received a letter from the superintendent, the Board of Ed Chair, stating their support for the project. The REC board submitted a letter stating their support, and you've heard from a number of coaches, parents, and representatives from various sports organizations in town. So with that, I would just put this request forward for your consideration.
Jamie, with the BL Company, are they the CM?
So they will, we will, we, we have funds in there to bring in an owners rep as well, but they will have oversight, part of their engagement was to, oversight through the project.
Okay.
So they won't be the CM, but they're the architect and design.
Okay.
And they will oversee.
So you have a...
We have funds in there. We anticipated to bring in a, either a CM as an advisor, or probably, probably more of an owners rep for a project like this.
Okay. Questions on, from the board on this?
Just, Mr. Chairman, how many outside groups in the field of athletics will be using the new complex when it finishes? I saw many of your representatives, but I'm just interested, do we know the influx?
Yeah, I mean, the, part of this project, or you may recall, the, the board appropriated $400,000 in ARPA dollars to not only look at this project, but also do a town-wide assessment of our fields. And through that process, they engaged the, the different organizations, all the sports groups that participate in town. And you will have, there'll be a, a report that'll be coming to make recommendations or plan, not project, but a plan to address the demand in town. This is not only organized play, but also recreational, considering that. But this, this complex is really two multi-person, purpose synthetic fields. So it'll be able to accommodate youth football, lacrosse, soccer, as well as softball, the field in the front will be softball. So the, the sports are just the leagues, in terms of, as available is growing, the demand, obviously, you know, you know, trends, you know, sports, there's different trends. I mean, if we were talking about this 15 years ago, 10 years ago, the amount of people playing lacrosse would, you know, is, has just increased. And plus, the ages, that has really expanded the amount. So this will give, you know, more playing time and accommodate the needs. So it's, it's, you know, several, you know, several organizations, which probably include, you know, hundreds of kids in each, or, each sport.
That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So this will be the, the use of this will be coordinated with the school and the REC Department?
Yes, so it is a school facility, so it, but we've had conversations with the superintendent and over this period of time, the Board of Ed Chair. Certainly, coordination will, and we're looking at ways to kind of improve that scheduling and the coordination. You know, there are, although this is, is, will be a facility that's a school facility, and a lot of this improvements, and you heard from a, a coach and a teacher today who said, you know, for their programs in school, that this is needed. So throughout the day, and, and the sports, the school teams that play, you know, as part of the school, it'll all meet their needs. But there's a lot of leagues and teams that, you know, will utilize this space outside of that. As well as, it's important that many school teams utilize town facilities. So as part of this process, we were looking at, how do we improve the coordination and scheduling to maximize available times?
Thank you. Your question?
Jeff?
Jamie, so if this is approved, when will this project commence?
So we, we, this has already gone through the regulatory...
Correct.
...body, so it has all the approvals. It is, we would be looking probably shortly after, if we were successful through RTM. So early spring, go out to bid and look to start this project this summer.
Thank you.
Jim, I, I know that this was not included in the Walsh Intermediate School renovation, but there's either unauthorized debt, or there's proceeds? Would any of those be, I know it's all fungible, but would these be allocated in some fashion, or considered for that repurposing?
Yeah, actually, in all likelihood, it would go to this project. You know, it's, it's the same place, same facility. But we would close out that bond authorization and move the proceeds for, for this purpose.
Do you have those proceeds?
Well, basically, what we're going to do is, once the change orders are done, we're going to see how much cash there is.
Got it.
The way the proceeds are sort of calculated are done differently for different purposes. So for tax purposes, the proceeds are considered to spend first, then the grants. But in reality, the project will basically have cash left over. And so, and we've been working with Colliers, the, the owners rep on that project. Like I said, they're, they're trying to close it out. But I, I think it's fair to say it'll be north of $2 million.
Okay.
At this point, based on what we, the information we were given.
Okay. All right. Other questions from the board on this request?
I'll move it, Joe.
So I think first, would someone move the waiving of the, I'd be happy to read it, but if you want to waive the reading of the full appropriation...
I'll move the waiving of the reading.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made second. Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then I'll read the resolution one more time. Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $7,650,000 for the Walsh Intermediate School WIS field improvement project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town, and notes in anticipation of such bonds in the amount not to exceed $7,650,000. Therefore, and to recommend the resolution for adoption by the representative of town meeting.
I'll move the resolution, Joe.
Been moved by Jeff.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Pam. Is there a discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Good luck, everybody. Okay, number eight is to discuss a draft debt policy for consideration at future meetings. Jim has provided us with, with some ideas here. Jim, you want to...
Give you a brief background.
Give us a brief overview of this and background?
Yeah, I'll start, I'll start with the background, and, and Joe, you may remember this. I'll wait till later.
I'm just going to wait a minute before the crowd to leave here. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. So by way of background, Joe, you probably remember that, you know, some years ago, we would go to the rating agencies and, you know, if we had a formal debt policy or in a formal fund balance policy, and at the time, we didn't, but, you know, we always gave them consistent answers in the way we managed these two items. However, I think it's fair to say that as we, as we get older and potentially move on in our, in our careers, we want to immortalize some of these documents, and we could have some record of it, so that the town can say to them in future if someone else is presenting in front of them, that this is in fact our policy. The other thing that's important to understand is that, you know, when we're looking at all of these challenges and opportunities, I mentioned that the key components of the plan was, you know, our debt and our fund balance, and I think that, you know, trying to frame those things by way of a policy would give good guidance, because, you know, folks are always talking about the fund balance, making good arguments on either side in terms of what the levels are. And I would say that, you know, whatever the town is comfortable with, it works for me, although, you know, if you look at the reference point, you know, if you look at national numbers, Standard and Poor's released a report recently that municipalities have close to 48% fund balance. Now, I don't think that that's a, something that we would aspire to in Branford, however, you know, so the question is, well, what would we aspire to? And so, you know, looking at what's down the road and recognizing that we want to have some liquidity for future capital projects prior to bonding, looking at what GFOA would look at as a standard, the initial proposal was a 20% to 25% of expenditures of the fund balance. The debt service is looking at, you know, there's more stuff in the policy, which I won't go over every item, but one of the things we're looking at is possibly 8.5% for a debt service as a percent of the budget. I will tell you that in talking with our financial advisor, who I've had some discussions with in terms of when I prepared the financial challenges, I shared that with him, and I talked with him also about these policies. And one of the things that he had mentioned is that actually the 8.5% may be on the low side, and I did contact a number of my colleagues, and a fair number of communities use 10%, but I think, you know, if that's something that we hit and we feel we need to do something, we could probably revisit it there. But we've been able to manage in that 8% and lower range. So at this point, I would probably leave it the same, but just to let you know, it would be on the conservative side compared to other communities. And again, I'm not looking for any action tonight. It's something for you to look at, review, and perhaps take action at the next regular Board of Finance.
Thanks, Jim. Questions on the, on Jim's proposed policies, which again, conceivably, the fund balance and debt policy would be adopted by the Board of Finance, and the debt policy might be considered by the RTM?
Yes, yeah, because the Board of Finance deals with revenues, and fund balance will be a revenue, and the RTM approves the bond authorization as well, so I would agree with your assessment.
So again, this is Jim's, you know, again, putting in to paper some of the policies that we actually follow, even, and these are either over the many years, so it's actually good to kind of put these out, and again, these are, some of these are best practice, so it's good to consider them. And as Jim pointed out, no action tonight, but for us to consider conceivably at a future meeting. Questions from Jim on this?
Will sit.
Questions from Charlie?
Charlie, did you have any questions about the policies? There's no action tonight.
No, I'm right, Charlie? No, I have no questions.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, so then we'll move on to number 10. Do you want to pass that forward? Item number 10, which is to consider, and if appropriate, I'm sorry, to consider a question from the Finance Director to recommend to the Board of Finance to appoint the accounting firm of Clifton Larson Allen LLP to perform the annual audit for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. And we have a memo from Jim outlining the need, and again, what we see is that many towns are trying to line up because sometimes there's availability and timeframe constraints on the audit firms, and so this might help in that regard. Jim?
Yes. Okay, Charlie, we're dealing with, as Joe said, item number 10, and that's to appoint CLA for fiscal year '24, as we heard tonight, the town, and we knew this was coming, there was some discussion with the auditors about being cited for the audit being late. And as I said in the past, you know, it's, there's three sides of a triangle to get the audit done, it's the auditors, it's the town, and it's the Board of Ed Finance Department. And we've had some, as did other communities, discussions with the state of Connecticut on this. And one of the things that a number of folks had recommended, because we've talked about some of the challenges in the audit environment, you know, one being that, you know, there's not as many firms doing the audit, the auditor, audit firms have had a hard time keeping staff. I know that in our pre-audit meeting a year ago, the partner who had since retired had mentioned that, you know, they had a lot of staff that left, you know, they could get better paying jobs than insurance companies, which underscores the need to sort of lock up your auditors for multi-year agreements, which I think some of the towns...
Jamie, remember you said three and four years, Catherine, right?
And so, so that's, that's, that probably explains why a lot of towns are not getting many bidders when they bid, some, North Haven only got one bidder, for example. So our corrective action plan in response to that citation is simply to get the audit done, is so, is to get the '23 done, and then to get that done by Mayor June, and then try to stay on track for the '24 audit. So this next year is going to be an extremely busy year, because we're going to have two audits, generally the budget and potentially the bond issue for financing some of these projects. But that corrective action plan can't start until you approve CLA for '23, '24, then we could basically, you know, sign the engagement and move forward.
All right, thanks, Jim. Questions from Jim on this?
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Harry. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You're all set, Charlie?
Yeah, he voted yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider, and if appropriate, approve the, adopt the attached 2024 meeting schedule. Did you want to go over that, Lisa, or Jim?
I mean, I think the only thing that's probably worth noting is that...
The budget hearings?
Is the budget hearing, yeah. Is that, you know, usually you have the Monday, Tuesday, off Wednesday, Thursday meeting, and then the following Monday, the Board of Finance would make its recommendations. I think it's somewhat self-evident by looking at some of the things that are going to be on our plate, some of the things that are going to be impacting the budget, that it may be prudent to take another week on this and then vote the following Monday. You certainly fall within the charter requirements, actually, the charter requirements are pretty liberal in terms of the amount of time it gives the Board of Finance to make its recommendations to the RTM. I believe it's actually two weeks before the RTM votes, which obviously nobody would propose that, because it would cause havoc on the RTM committee process, and nobody wants to do that. But I think that when you're looking at, at all the moving parts in this budget, and every budget has moving parts, but this one, I think, has more than a typical year. And, you know, just a fire study alone is a major, is a major moving part. So I think that you may find that having that extra week, and we did discuss this with the First Selectman and the Chairman as well, as possibly, you know, spreading that out just a little bit. So that's what's reflected in the schedule, and that's where it differs from prior years. I mean, you'll notice the pattern of the last Monday of every month, with the exceptions of Memorial Day and things like that, but that same kind of pattern is still in this schedule.
Okay, thanks. Lisa, we can accommodate the 21st, you said there's some accommodation that we may need to deal with with the P and Z?
Yes, Joe, so Thursday, March 21st, there is a conflict for this particular room with planning and zoning, but just like we did last year, we worked it out, Harry either moved the meeting to the Community House or moved it to another day, so I'll get with Harry tomorrow.
Okay. All right, any other questions on the, on the schedule? Somebody want to move it?
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Pam?
Yep.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Who moved it, please?
What's that?
Jeff.
Jeff, and then Pam, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Just, Jim, just thanks for the good analysis and you and your office and Catherine, so thanks for the continued good work. With no other business to come before the Board, entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.